Welcome, everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 59453, Subdivision E of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950 in sequence, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom meeting information was on the posted agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the City Council meeting by emailing the city clerk at cityclerksci.series.ca.us by 5:00 p.m. with the date of the meeting. Include the agenda item number or public comment before the comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the City Council and kept on file as part of the official record of the council meeting. And welcome, everybody, to the council chambers today, Monday, October 11, 2021. I now call this meeting to order. May we get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey. Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Silveira.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. We'll begin with the invocation by Pastor Tim Ginoza from Big Valley Grace. I believe he's here or is he on Zoom? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to give the invocation today? Hey, please step up. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening. Thank you for our city officials. Thank you for everyone else that is here this evening. We need to be blessed by your time and encouragement to everyone here and those citizens that are at home.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin this presentation, I would like to make a public announcement. As of today, Vice Mayor Cooper Conde has turned in his resignation. And we have, we will have an item on the agenda next meeting to determine how we will fill District 4. We'll now move on to the presentation. And today's presentation is the acknowledgement of Chief Collins' achievements and present to him executive certification by the post. Chief Collins, if you don't mind, know this is a surprise to you, kind of wanted to drop this on you since you're so used to it. Yes, that is the culprit right there, Captain Crane. So I would like to step up with you, sir, if I can get a microphone. Chief Collins, we have a small little autobiography of Mr. Collins here today. And we'll start off by saying, from police explorer to chief of police. Chief Collins is a local graduate of Series High. He has joined, he joined the Series Police Department as an explorer at the age of 19. In 1995, he was hired by Chief Peterson as a reserve officer. In 1997, he was hired as a full-time officer where he was assigned to patrol. He was then assigned to Detective Bureau and worked as a financial crimes and high-tech crimes investigator. Chief Collins was also promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2004. And was assigned to the Patrol Division during this time. He earned a BA in organizational leadership from Champion University and a master's degree from Brandman University, also in organizational leadership. In 2008, he was promoted to lieutenant, where he managed the Department Special Operations Unit. In 2015, he was promoted to captain. In 2019, he was promoted to chief. Chief Collins is a graduate of Sherman Block Supervising Leadership Institute, Class 235. He is also a graduate of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, Class of 268. For many years, Chief Colin devoted his time off to series youth sports. He coached youth soccer and served on the youth soccer board for three years. He also volunteered as a coach for youth baseball and is very involved in the serious community. Chief Collins is also one of my biggest mentors, so I am really proud to give this to you today, sir. I'm sure you prepared a speech today, but you're welcome to say anything. Thank you very much, Chief Collins. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We'll now move on to citizens communications. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in the City Council meetings, adopter rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution Number 2007-106, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda, unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. And we will begin with Zoom comments.
Yes, Mayor, first person with their raises, Lee Brant, Mr. Brant, I'll unmute your mic.
Good evening. Okay, good evening, Council. First off, I would like to say that I had some dealings with Chief Collins a long time ago. He was my escort as I played Santa Claus. They wanted me to play Santa Claus because I did not need any padding. Chief Collins drove me around town and we just had a great time and just got to know each other. And that, and congratulations, Chief Collins. I would just like to talk about the, the speeders, the people who are driving the Dodge Chargers, the Mustangs, the Camaros around town. The exhibition of speed, you know, over in front of like Sequoia Market. You know, you can see somebody that somebody had peeled out, you know, nine or 10 or 12 times. You know, on my street right now, there is somebody who put blue chalk underneath their tires and they just lit them up. Now there's a big blue streaks going down my street. This, there's something that has to be done about this. It's really getting out of hand. The loud exhaust, you know, two, three o'clock in the morning, these guys taking off. You know, I mean, I came real close to getting T-boned the other day. I pulled out onto Central, I looked to my right, it was clear, I looked to my left, it was clear. I looked back to my right, it was still clear. I looked to my left and I went to take off and there was a car coming, it was a silver Mustang. I would say he had to be doing at least 60. And that was on his way to hatch. Something has really got to be done about it. I talked at the last meeting regarding, maybe it's an engineering problem. You know, maybe we need to extend the curbs out, you know, you know, like his on Fowler. Put in, you know, more roundabouts, you know, like his on Toolumi in Turlock. And it's all over the city. And I mean, it's within, it's in the residential, you know, somebody is going to get killed by these guys. You know, I've already saw a report of somebody smashed in the tree over Roding Heights Park. You know, and they abandoned their car. You know, I mean, I don't know, I don't have the, the solution, you know, but maybe it could be done, you know, through engineering. I, I don't think speed bumps are the answer because speed bump is gonna, it's gonna be mechanically, it slows down the fire department, slows down the ambulance, slows down PD. You know, I just, I, I am at a total loss at what to do. And I just wish you guys good luck and I just hope that it could be looked into. I'm sure you can contact the City of Olympia, Washington regarding that, regarding the speed bumps. So anyway, take care and God bless you all. You definitely gonna need it. Mr. Casey, I am in your district. If you would like to contact me, Diane has all my information. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay. We do have a yellow slip for citizens communication. John Osgood. John, it's good, welcome. Good evening.
Kind of borders on Mr. Brant's comments about speeding. Captain Crane and I had a very wonderful conversation this past week about there's nothing our city council can do about the speeding or the failing to yield at crosswalks. So we can't approve projects to spray paint stripes on the road to make the crosswalks more visible. We can't force people to drive sanely. This is a problem that's occurred since the mid to late 90s. And it, it's directly related to our city school district taking driver's education and driver's training out of the high schools. We have to address how we're educating our citizenry if we want these traffic-related issues to, to stop. And I think that it would behoove us as a city and as a police department, like I spoke with Captain Crane, that we liaison with the school district to try to get those, those types of programs back in our local education system. Instead of always bowing to what every other school district in the state's doing or whatever other city's doing. It starts right here at home. And I think with the coalition of the citizens, the council and the police department, we can affect change, positive change where that traffic issue is concerned. On another note, I'm not here to slam staff. I drove past Smyrna Park on my way home today. We know we have a very large windstorm today and tomorrow. I was an advocate for leaving the grid pruning in our budget. Today, we have branches that are, our municipal staff is going to have to go pick up. Some of those may have been caused by a storm, even if we did prune. But having left that grid pruning program in place, Jeremy and his men could have negated some of this damage ahead of time. That's what I have this evening outside of our agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Good evening, City Council members.
Good evening.
I would also like to congratulate our chief of police. I've had the pleasure of knowing him since he was in high school. And so have watched his career as I've lived in the city since that time. And so congratulations, chief. My comments are directed to the council in some regard to the email that I sent you previously. And I'm sure you received. I want to point out that the appointment of Measure H and the Planning Commission applicants is not something that we really, really need to rush into. Most of the meetings that these folks have had this past year have been postponed and canceled. The Planning Commission has canceled, I believe, at least 50% of the meetings that they were going to have. And the Measure H Committee folks meet, what, twice a year in June and September? Is the information that I could gain from the Series website. And the September meeting was canceled, so they've only had one meeting in the last year since January. So rushing to make these appointments is not something that we should be doing. The postponement of the, of the applicants was so that District One could come up to speed with a representative on council. And if we proceed tonight to make these appointments, District One doesn't have any input in it other than to cast a vote. There was no chance for that person to be involved in any of the interviews might have taken place or even the selection of the people that might be appointed this evening. I would suggest that the whole process be changed. I feel that each council member, and there's five of you up there, four council members and the mayor, should appoint one person to each committee. And that would put five on both committees. And there would be a representation from each district in the city. Each of you would have the choice when you become elected and take office in January of that particular year to appoint the person that would follow you for your four years or your year and a half or whatever it is when you take your seat. And then when the next person comes into that position, they would appoint their representative. And it's staggered years, as we well know. And so that is a consideration that would give each district in the city a representation on those committees, someone they can speak to directly as well as their council person. So I really, really encourage you to set aside what you might do this evening and take it up at the beginning of the year and/or between now and the beginning of the year. Because I believe two of these seats have already expired in 2020. And one seat's going to expire at the end of this year. So we could do a clean sweep and appoint all new people, those that you choose, each one of you independently, and accomplish what we need to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Janie Akley, Series.
Welcome.
Recently, there was, I think at the last council meeting or before, there was some kind of controversy about discrepancy between code enforcement and what they do and law enforcement and what they do. And it had to do with vendors. I'm sure there's other areas involved in that. And the public hasn't got an answer yet on why this happened. And I think John Warren described some sections in the code. Seems pretty straightforward if you read them, I guess. Maybe I'm reading the wrong things and the wrong line, where the lines aren't in there. So what do we have to do to get an answer on these things? We have to bring it to, on the agenda? Do we have to put this on an agenda? Before we can find out what's going on with this? The police department did a great job before on these vendors and stuff, trying to keep them out of the parking lots. And of course, I think a lot of people in the city think they should be cited. We haven't deterred it. The weather's gonna have a factor, I'm sure, at the winter weather, but then they'll be back in the spring and the summer once again. And if I'm correct, I think I said something before, the DOJ has been investigating human trafficking for these people. Some of them that are actually trafficked to these areas from different places. And one particular place was supposed to be out of Oakland. And they're trafficking these people that are vendors. So these people are slaves and the general public doesn't know that. And they're paying a debt off for probably being here or brought here. So I'd like to get some answers. If we need it on the agenda, discuss something, I think we should put it on there and let the public hear what's really going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yankel. Anyone else would like to come up and speak? Was there any emails? Yeah. A public comment period is now closed. We're gonna move on to appointments and boards of commissions, but before we begin with the Planning Commission and Measure H positions, I wanted to mention that Councilmember Casey had requested to open up the applications once again for item number 15. I just wanted to make sure if there's anything that he wanted to say before we begin.
Turn on your microphone. Click on the button.
There you go. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, during your January 11, 2021 council meeting, you took action to postpone the appointments to the Planning Commission and the Measure H Oversight Committee until the District One council seat was filled. During my campaign, I was asked numerous times, how does one apply for the vacancies? They, like myself, assumed that the process would open up once the seat was filled. At our last council meeting, it was decided not to reopen the process. I did not take that to mean that I would not have any input on interviewing the candidate. According to the ordinance 2019-1053, the update to our Municipal Code, Section 2, Chapter 5, Paragraph 2.05-020, the makeup shall be five voting members, one non-voting student member. The members of the commission shall be appointed by the mayor with the City Council approval. At this time, I'm asking you to reopen the process so I can have some input in the selection. Actually, I'm unclear why the appointment was postponed in January. It seems, because it seems in the end that it didn't have anything to do with the empty District One seat. I believe we should make sure that each council district is represented and review the rule of term limits as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So we will now open up the Planning Commission and Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee appointments. If we have an update on that.
Just, just brief presentation. And I, this item is consideration of Mayor's recommendations for appointments to the Planning Commission for two, four-year terms to expire December 31, 2024. And one expired four-year term to expire December 31, 2023. Also, we got him.
My phone up. Want to make sure they can't hear you. These, they're gonna turn your microphone, apologies, Alex.
Thank you. Test one, two, test, one, two, is that okay?
Thank you.
Test one, two, is that better? Okay. So this item is consideration of the mayor's appointments. I'll just go back just a moment or two. Consideration of the mayor's recommendations for appointments to the Planning Commission and consideration of the mayor's recommendations for appointments to the Measure H Committee. The Measure H appointments are for two, three-year terms to expire June 30, 2023. On January 5, 2021, Mayor Lopez and councilperson Rhino interviewed six applicants. At the January 11, 2021 meeting, as the council is aware, Mayor Lopez recommended the appointments of Bob Katchel, Gary Del Nero, and Mr. Daniel Martinez. In regard to Measure H, the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee, on January 7, Mayor Lopez and councilperson Silveira interviewed three applicants. And again, at the January 11, 2021 meeting, Mayor Lopez recommended the appointments of Joshua Steely and Rosalinda Viera. During the January 11 council meeting, council took action to postpone the appointments to both of these commission to the Planning Commission and the Measure H Oversight Committee until the District One council vacancy or council seat was filled. Since that position or that district council member position has been filled, this recommendation or the manager's recommendations are being brought back to you as the City Council. The recommendation this evening is to consider those appointments to both the Planning Commission and Measure H Committee. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Alex. I appreciate it. Does the council have anything to say? Councilmember Rhino?
Well, I, I did text you this morning to discuss it, but you didn't respond to me. So I'm not sure what was up with that. As far as Councilmember Casey's comment that he felt he wasn't involved in it because he didn't get to interview the applicants. Well, the process that we used, he wouldn't have been able to anyway because it was the mayor and one council member that did the interviews. We didn't do it as the entire council.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Silveira.
I concur with Councilmember Rhino and believe that we should appoint people as the city manager. So.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. We can go ahead and begin with motion, Councilmember, to appoint the Planning Commission first. Actually, what? I'll take that back. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? If you could please step up. Thank you.
So you guys can hear me. My name's Rosalinda Viera. Most people call me Rose. I moved here in Series from Modesto in 2002, and I'm one of the ones being considered for the Measure H Oversight Committee. I raised all four of my children here in Series. My youngest is now a senior in high school. Well, my youngest daughter, granddaughter, just entered TK here in Series. I'm also a homeowner, but I don't plan on moving anytime soon. I do live in Rhino's district. I also was part of Series when we actually voted on Measure H in 2007. Now, I submitted my application twice. Apparently, my first time it wasn't considered or it got lost or whatever the situation was. So I had to resubmit it and it got reconsidered. And I did an interview with both councilmember Silvera and Mayor Lopez. Just a little bit about my background and why I would like to be appointed tonight. I do have a bachelor's degree in business, a minor in human resources. I have a master's degree in business and have been working in the accounting field since 1990, doing forensic accounting, bookkeeping, processing payroll, cost accounting, forensic assignment, and overseeing billion-dollar budgets in private and government industries. I prefer numbers in Excel sheets over reading a novel any day. You will see me. I'm just one of those numbers kind of person. I also sit on the county EDAT committee. So I'm actually familiar with the policies, procedures, and growth that you guys are looking for here in the city as well as the entire county. When I was in college, I actually interned over at St. Louis County Juvenile Hall, working directly with our juvenile probation officers as well as our law enforcement and our youth, working together to try to look forward to a better tomorrow. I would like you to not exactly show what you're looking for when it comes to qualifications, since there were only two in the interview. But I do think I meet the educational and background here in Series to be considered for that appointment tonight. Thank you again for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. I do have a yellow slip for Mr. Osgood. Or I'd just step up, sir.
Kind of more from Mr. Casey's referral section, but since we skipped over that. Everybody pretty much knows how I feel. Think we need to open that up. We have a new change this evening. Be very clear. We decided to hold off on these appointments until District One seat was filled. What do we have this evening? We have Cooper resigning. Oh, we don't have anyone in that seat. District Four should have a voice. Review from District Four that speaks every week or every bi-weekly to you guys. Now we're in the same situation with District Four that we were in with District One. I'm asking you guys for consistency all the time. Let's be consistent. I know I've been harping. Been the guy harping to push this along and get Daniel on that committee. We don't have to appoint all three. Let's give the respect to the new guy going in if that's what we need to do. But if we had a standard that we waited until District One was full, now we have a vacancy in District Four. You guys need to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood. Is there anyone else in the audience?
John Warren. Councilmembers, please consider that the interview for the position that you're about to appoint were on January the 5th and January the 7th. Council District One vacancy was on January 1. So that position didn't have a chance, whoever that person had been, to be involved in the process in any regard. Possibly if that seat had been filled, that seat may have been involved in the interview process. Myself personally, I think all of you should have been involved in the interview process. Each district needs representation. And as Mr. Osgood has pointed out, we do have a vacancy now with District Four. So we're right back where we were to begin with. I employ you. It's not an emergency. These people don't have regular meetings and they cancel half the ones that are scheduled. Set it aside. Move forward slowly and let's get a really good process in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person? See you in none? Anybody on Zoom? We'll now move on to the appointment for planning commission first. If any councilmembers would like to.
Yeah, I'll move to approve as the city manager read with a note that the reason we're in the situation because we, our vote was two to two in January. If it would not have been two to two, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So I believe taking it to another vote is the proper thing to do. If it ends up two-two, so be it. If it doesn't, we can move forward. I'll move to approve the planning commission nominations that the city manager explained.
Second.
Can we get the roll call?
Councilmember Casey? Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes three, one.
We'll now move to Measure H Oversight Committee.
I move to appoint Mr. Steely and Ms. Viera to the Measure H committee.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes three, one.
We'll now move on. If there's any conflict of interest from the city council? Can you speak up? No? Rhino? No?
No.
Thank you very much. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar consider routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendations of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a single roll call vote. If there's anyone on the council that would like a consent item pulled for the discussion? Councilmember Casey?
No, I have none.
Okay. Councilmember Rhino?
No.
Councilmember Silvera? Okay. Is there anyone in the public? I do have a yellow slip here. Six and thirteen. Who said fourteen? Fourteen? I don't know. John Osgood had mentioned fourteen and fifteen. Fifteen is the, okay, you're correct. So no fifteen. Great. Thank you, sir. But right now I have six, thirteen, fourteen, and eight. Correct?
No, fourteen.
It's fourteen.
New business.
Oh, fourteen is a Luna contract? Gotcha. That's new business. So that is not a consent item. Okay. Thank you. So six, thirteen, and eight, correct? Okay. Counsel? Get a motion to pass everything else.
Okay. Move to approve all consent calendar items except number six, eight, and thirteen.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey? Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start off with the resolution number 202199, awarding the construction contract for the CML 5241, 062 and 63 ITS signal synchronization, Phase Three, and IV to Street Francis Electric LLC, authorizing a 10% contingency, authorizing a budget amendment, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract.
This Dave Pratt series. What is Phase Three and Four? Is there any more phases after that?
Let's face three and four. It's the continuation of Phase One and Two. And I'm hoping that we might have one more, which is Phase Five.
As far as see, there's no improvement in the lighting system as it is. So I'm hoping that these do something for it. Because your lights now don't work in conjunction with each other. And sometimes they do work and sometimes they don't. I've sat with first in line truck next to me starts to take off and it's already changing back to red. So he doesn't, he doesn't. And then sometimes if they're lucky, they're partway out and they have no choice but to got to keep going even when the light changes. You're going to have to do something, but especially during the school season. It's really bad. And you more lights you guys keep putting close together, not sync correctly, traffic backs up. But especially traffic come from Modesto backs up all the way to Riverside. Sometimes even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. No one else for item number six? Okay. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. I'll move to approve number six in the consent calendar. Resolution 2021-99.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero.
Moving on to item number eight. Resolution number 2021-101, authorizing the city to implement teleconference hybrid public meeting pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Osgood.
Not really against this at all. I just want to say the previous motions we put in place to open these meetings to public attendance, we were ahead of the state on this. We started this ball in motion with these hybrid meetings in Series long ago, and I'm all for this. Only thing is when those Zoom meetings give us a glitch is where I see an issue. But I think I've talked to a couple of our city staff and I don't know how we fix that. So I'd just like to congratulate ourselves that before the state said we should be hybrid, that we were hybrid in Series. We should be proud of that.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood. Counsel?
I agree. This is, this gives us the ability to continue to do this through January of 2024. And like Mr. Osgood said, I'm in Zoom meetings constantly, it seems like, and they're all screwed up most of the time. But we're not independent of anybody else on the glitches. Trust me, it's across in the entire world having the same issue. Move to approve number eight, resolution 2021-101 on the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero.
Moving on to item number 13, resolution number 2021-106, approving an agreement with the invoice cloud for electronic bill payment and bill presentation services and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Dave Pratt again. What's this entail? Because basically now I get a paper bill and I pay online. What's this going to change?
This is going to give us, give the customers more options to pay. So right now you can pay online or you can set up auto pay through the office. This gives the ability to pay from your cell phone. It'll send you an electronic bill. It's just more up-to-date options, electronic options.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Counsel?
Comment, we talked a little bit about this at the Council League of California Cities Conference, and this is pretty much across the board. Everybody's doing this. It's a great service to the community to be able to have an app to do all your city business. So congratulations to the city staff that put this in motion. And I'd like to approve resolution 2021-106, the consent calendar.
Second. The roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero.
Thank you. There's no unfinished business, no public hearing. On to new business on item number 14. Resolution number 2021-07107, ratifying the memorandum of understanding between the City of Series and the Laborers and International Union of North America. Yeah. There he is. How you doing today?
I'm doing great, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, esteemed members of the city council. My name is Che Johnson. I am the negotiator and labor attorney on behalf of the city who had the pleasure of representing the city of Series at this last negotiations with Launa. Before you is a agenda item that represents months of hard work between the city and the laborers to reach a collective bargaining agreement, which helps provide guaranteed cost of living increases to the employees while also ensuring that classic members of the city of Series, Launa Group, contribute towards their retirement. This provides benefits to employees while also moving to help increase the financial stability of the city and long-term stability of the city. Before you is the resolution to approve the memorandum of understanding, which has been ratified by the membership of Launa. It presents, represents a 3% COLA in each year of the three-year agreement and also provides that the employees will pick up, the classic member employees will pick up the remainder of their retirement with a cost offset to that. At this time, I will now answer any questions of the city council.
The questions, city council? Rhino? This doesn't seem like it. And I believe I do have a, I do have a yellow card from Mr. Osgood. Thank you, Che. Appreciate it.
Maybe should have gave him a microphone. You guys might not know the answers to my questions. But when I read the agenda packet, saw in there, there's like a $5,000 payment upfront, 3% per year. When I do the math over these next three years, it's $9,000 raise per employee. Can tell you right now, in the last three years as a business owner, I haven't increased my salary $9,000. As a citizen, a private worker in this community, our wages are not increasing $9,000 every three years. We get no cost of living increase. I don't begrudge good employees an increase in wage. But I've said it before, I don't think our city should be beholden to labor unions. I think we can, we can contract with the individual without a union situation. I know I'm probably in the minority on that where I don't think public employees should be union employees. But I definitely don't think we should be handing out $9,000 in three years to our employees when the citizens aren't getting that raise. Cost of living increases don't happen for the public that pay the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else?
Councilmembers, John Warren. I see that some of this $5,000 bonus to each member is going to come from the American Rescue Plan Act funding. is going to come from that funding. But also the city, Series, is going to pay out of its pocket approximately 240.
But also the city areas is going to pay out of its pocket approximately $240,000. And I see that this is a budget amendment. So my question to you folks is, we just adopted a balanced budget and reduced some of our city expenses to obtain that balanced budget. With these expenditures that are going to be added as a budget amendment, are we still going to be within our budget limits? Or are we going outside of our budget with this amendment? Are we spending more money than we budgeted?
These expenditures, we will still be within the reserves that the council has set.
So we're going outside of our budget?
It will increase our current budget. It will be an increase to our current budget, yes.
Okay, so why are we doing this? Why are we going outside our budget? We just beat ourselves up to get a balanced budget. Now we're going to agree upon something that's going to go outside of that? That's not acceptable. We need to stay within our budget. I have 50 bucks a month to spend. I can't spend $100. I can't do that because I don't have it. Reserves are reserves, not to be used to give employees wages. Consider that, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody on Zoom? Also have any questions? Want to make sure? Okay. Moving on.
Move to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash one oh seven, ratifying the memorandum of understanding between the City of Series Laborers International Union of North America, also known as Launa.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
I need to abstain. I didn't have right information before it came to the meeting. Abstain.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Silveira.
Yes.
And Mayor Lopez.
Hi.
Motion passes three with one abstention by Councilmember Casey.
There is no discussion items? Now moving on to, well, we already talked about the council member referral, so. But is there anybody on the council that would like to make any referrals for a future agenda item? See and none? I have no reports. City Council, you have any reports? Councilmember Rhino? No? Okay.
Go ahead. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I only have report that I again understood when I was running for office that once we got here, or once this office was filled, that they would have some impact on the decision making. And I I respect Councilmember Rhino's statement that that it was decided among, you know, you and one other member. And so it wasn't really full council input. I'm just disappointed. Well, I'm disappointed that I misunderstood and I and I go back to my initial statement. I think there was really no need to wait till the seat got filled. You could have moved forward in January. Or that's it. I'm I I know that I'm new to politics and I have a lot to learn and I appreciate the help of staff and other council members. But again, I was disappointed in how this turned out. Not to say that the candidates aren't worthy of the position. It's just that we understood that other candidates would have an opportunity or new candidates would have an opportunity to present their case before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Casey, just to remind, a comment to reiterate what I said when we took the vote. The reason we're talking about this now was not because it was put off. It was because it was a two two vote and we could not make a decision. So it's put off in lieu of we decided until there was five people on the council. So if we would have had the vote, a three one vote at that point, then those nominations would have been, those people would have been selected way back in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Mayor, may or may I say something?
Absolutely.
Given the comments by Councilmember Casey, maybe when we have the next vacancy in December and we're going to be taking applications, maybe rather than do a committee made up of the mayor and one council member, we do as we did when we were trying to fill the District One seat and we have all of the applicants come before the entire council, just like just like we did for the city council appointment, do that for planning commission and any other commission seats we may have open in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Just like all other things that we can we can change the process. We have the ability to do that. We can put things on the agenda and ask that the process be changed. So if that's something that somebody's interested in doing, then we need to follow that procedure to have it placed on an agenda and talk about it at that point.
Well, we we actually have done it both ways. I don't know that there's any procedure that in the past we've done it where the applicants came before a full committee or the full commission. And we've also done it where it was the mayor and one council member. So I don't think it's a procedural change. I just think it's a decision at the time they council is going to consider which which they choose to do. We don't we don't need to put it on an agenda.
Obviously, we've talked about this so much, it would probably be a good idea to look into our municipal code, et cetera, to find out if there is something that gives us some direction on how we should be doing this. And if not, like Councilman Rhino said, maybe we can choose to do it differently each time. But I think at this point, with the attention that's been given to this, we should make sure that there isn't a process that we're supposed to be following that's already in our code. So I would be who the city staff, put that on the city staff to check into that, but you could do that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rhino. Appreciate that.
One one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, go ahead.
The process is coined in the municipal code. It's pretty simple. I think the, you know, the mayor make the appointments and the the council approves the appointments. That process may not need to change. But really, the issue at hand is that the misunderstanding, the general public and me myself, that that once the seat was filled, you were going to open it up. And that's where the real problem came. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll have an opportunity to discuss this in the future now that we're currently in the report section. Hopefully by the next council meeting week, Rhino, you're welcome to bring that up along the agenda item or we can just discuss it. Okay, so anything from the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to take a moment to introduce a new employee with the City of Series, a new recreation manager, Joey Chavez, sitting in the back. If you can raise your hand, Mr. Chavez, welcome. Looking forward to working with Mr. Chavez in his new capacity as recreation manager. So I don't think we told you you'd have a half hour presentation this evening, but anyway, I'm kidding. Thank you. Welcome, welcome. And on to the chief. I had nothing to do with that presentation. That agenda item is listed under city manager. You can thank that gentleman behind you for for that agenda.
I'll take a little a little back last me and Crane were were the dynamic.
Then just wanted to remind folks about the upcoming trunk or treat Halloween celebration on October thirtieth, one to four in Whitmore Park. So be there for that great event that's coming up. Then lastly, we will be having our first redistricting hearing Monday, October twenty fifth, seven P M. Here in the council chamber, so encouraging community members of the public to participate in that very important process. So that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. City Attorney?
No report, Mayor.
Anyone from the departments? Chief Collins?
Okay, I'd just like to update the council that we swore in a new officer this morning. The pleasure of having the mayor present and Councilmember Casey was present as well. That adds to our cadre of officers, but I anticipate that we're going to be losing a few more in the near future. I'd also like to take the time to thank Captain Crane and everybody who helped coordinate this presentation tonight and thank Post for recognizing the many years of achieving this executive certificate, which is rare in this profession. So thank you to everybody who was involved in that.
Thank you. Any other department heads that would like to speak? Is the county supervisor on the line? No? Okay. We will now adjourn this meeting to go to closed session for a conference with the labor negotiator. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to the closed session item, after the closed session, the city attorney will return to report out. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. The report from closed session is that the council gave direction to staff on the labor negotiations item.
Okay.